We're gonna call this meeting to order and we're gonna begin with an invocation that Councilmember Walter Jones is gonna offer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here tonight. We remember this special time of the year as we're in Advent and getting close to Christmas. We recognize many people may be struggling during this time with loved ones that they maybe have lost over the years and we pray a special blessing for them and think of them and hope that it's a meaningful Christmas and that we all remember the reason and that is the Christ child. We thank you for all of the employees of Homewood, all they do for us. We thank for all the residents and what they do for the community and helping others. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please, Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here. So everyone is present and accounted for tonight. Next item of business is the reading of the minutes from December 3, 2018. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for dispensing the reading and approving said minutes.
Ms. Little, those need to be carried over. I'm sorry, I did not get those out.
Oh, you did not get those out?
I did not get those in. I'm sorry.
We will carry that over. No problem. Board vacancies. Are y'all aware of any board vacancies that we have tonight either to open or to close? Wait, I'm gonna let Ms. Andrus first.
Okay. We, I've got clarification on the Industrial Board and the Hydra and those are three at-large positions and then one Ward Two position.
So we need to open them now, correct?
Correct.
All right. Let's, let's leave them open through, because of the holidays, can we, Mr. Kendrick, could we leave them open through the second meeting in January?
Yes, sir. That's your call.
Okay. Let's do that. So we'll leave them open through, I'm going by memory, January 28th. Does that sound correct? Yes. Okay. All right. But I would point out to my two Ward folks, two Ward Two folks, that we certainly need an individual from that ward as well. Okay? What else? Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I had a quick question. I guess it's a protocol question. We have a BZA slot that's actually goes through the end of this month. Can we open that up? I guess it's a Mr. Kendrick question. Can we open that up prospectively and say it's gonna be through this date, from this date through this date so we can go ahead and get that done?
Yes, sir. You can anticipate a vacancy.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and open that up for applications through the, let's just say, the second meeting in January.
Sounds good.
If that's okay with you, Andrew.
That's fine.
Secondly, a question for Mr. Burgett. Did you get a letter of resignation from someone on the HEC yet in one of the at-large slots?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. We do have someone on the HEC who's also gonna be resigning because he's relocating outside the city of Homewood, but I guess we'll wait until we get the letter on that one. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. We have four items to add to the agenda, so let me share those with y'all if I can. First is 171218. This is new business other. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Davis Architects for library expansion requested by Deborah Fout. We could put your name on that too, Mr. Gualtney, if you wanted to. Aren't you my library?
I am your library. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll put your name on that also. And the second one is committee referral. It's 181218. Request to transfer funds to engineering line item requested by Mr. Thames and this will be the finance committee, Mr. Jones. And another committee referral is 191218. And this is request for a variance to the side ornaments at 1511 Ridge Road requested by Josh Willens, W-I-L-L-E-N-S, and Greg Cobb with BEZ.
Bruce, I think that's a fence, fence variance.
Fence. You're right. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Fence. But it's still a special issues item. Thank you. Appreciate you listening.
What is the address, please?
1511 Ridge Road. And lastly, 201218 would be a request for consideration to contest the election results and this will be a work session which I will schedule in the month of January. So we're gonna add all of those items to the agenda tonight pending approval. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Wolverton. All right. All in favor for approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is approved. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
I move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. McCluskey. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous as well. All right. We're gonna move on to old business. We're gonna take a couple of items out of order here because I suspect we have several people interested in one particular item. The first item is 201018, public hearing that is continued from November 19, 2018 at 6:00 PM for consideration of condemning the house at 1627 Salter Road requested by Wyatt Pugh. And again, this, this public hearing is still open, Mr. Pugh? If you can come forward and give us an update.
Yes, sir. I spoke with the owner, Mr. Pears, this afternoon. He had a helper out there. They put up a fence. There's a picture of what he's put up. It's a four-foot fence. It's just sort of a temporary chicken wire makeshift fence. It doesn't address the, the problem behind the fence, but it, and he also put some no trespassing signs up, as you can see. This will at least keep people out, at least through the holidays. That's where he stands at the moment.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
So Mr. Pugh and I have been speaking to Mr. Pears over the last little while, especially today. And he was here and he did hire someone to get the fence put up as requested by Mr. Pugh. And in our initial discussion of this, of this issue, we had decided that we would allow him till after the holidays as long as he did erect that fence, which he has now done. So Mr. Pugh and I have talked and obviously this is not the end with this property. There's still much to be done, but because his mother's in poor health and he's having to deal with that, we've decided that now that he has met our requirement of erecting the fence, we'll stick with our original suggestion, which was to wait until after the new year, which Wyatt and I will get together, come up with a task list of things that must be accomplished in a, by a certain deadline and then we will be done with this.
So what is your recommendation, Mr. Pugh?
I support that, what Counselor Smith suggested. I would also add that I did speak to Mr. Pears about a possible timeline of getting these repairs done permanently. He couldn't give me a timeline, but he said he is, he has reached out to someone for an estimate on getting the carport rebuilt, so.
Well.
But I would, I would support.
I understand. We're gonna close the public hearing tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this particular matter? If there is not, then we are definitely closing this public hearing now. Well, I mean, it's unusual that we've carried one through three council meetings. So, Ms. Smith, what is your desire at this point? I understand there's a series of tasks. He has made some progress. I also have been by the property and looked at it.
And he knows, as we have discussed with him today, that there is still work to be done for sure in order to get it to a place where we all can feel like it can be let go of completely. I'm not exactly sure what the appropriate procedural request is.
Well, I don't think we wanna, Mr. Kendrick, again, we don't wanna keep 201018 on here.
I mean, we can just drop it and then we could always add it back if such a need arose.
If you drop it, you're gonna have to renotice and go through the notice process.
Oh, that's true. That's true. Could we send it, could we send it back to committee?
Sure.
And then that's on a committee agenda instead of the council agenda until we get it handled. Okay. Then I would refer it back to, I guess that would be the building, would that be P and D? Is that your committee?
Sure.
Sure.
I don't know. Why not just leave it here if we're gonna give it one more carryover? I mean.
I could just tell Bruce doesn't wanna carry it over.
What I say that is if he hasn't made, you know, some progress by the next meeting, you know, we could condemn the house and as we all know, that still gives a proper amount of time.
Thirty days.
To correct, well, more than that really, I think it, Mr. Kendrick, how long?
It's thirty days after, we can't take any action.
Right.
For a period of thirty days after we adopt the resolution.
All right. The public hearing's closed. We'll carry this over until the January meeting and then we'll go from there. Okay? The next item, and again, we're taking this out of order, is 301118. It's a public hearing set for tonight. For consideration to address the city council concerning the existing covenants for Wildwood North, a request by Mike Mosley and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department. Let me ask this. I know there's several folks that would like to, first, we're gonna open the public hearing in just a second, but before we do, if you are here and you would like to speak to this item, the council wants you to have that opportunity. That's important. We would ask you to do two things. One, sign in over here with Mr. Burgett with your name and your address. And then when you come to speak, again, verbally give that name and address. Secondly, we're gonna ask you, if you can, to limit this to two minutes. And, and again, we wanna hear what you have to say. It's important, but it's, it's easy to be repetitive and we encourage all of us to be succinct, okay? So if you'll sign in.
Are you supposed to sign in right now?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. And we will open this public hearing. Absolutely, ma'am. But we, we definitely want a record of your attendance here if you're gonna speak. It's important to us.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
Yes?
I'm sorry. I just, I had a quick question. Is the applicant present or a representative for the applicant present?
Well, we're gonna find out.
Okay.
The public hearing is now open.
Okay. I just, I didn't see, so I didn't know. Just wanted to check.
We're going to find out. I'm the keeper of the time clock, so.
Ms. Limbaugh?
Yes, ma'am. Come on, please. Yes. Ma'am, who's seat? Yes.
Should we maybe have the applicant come up and give a description as to tackle what he's requesting?
Sure. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, if you will, are you Mr. Mosley?
Yes.
Me?
No. No, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'm not communicating well. Not your fault, mine. Mr. Mosley, if you could come first and let, let the public that's here know what your
We are requesting to shift the natural buffer fifty feet to the right into the rear so that we can purchase fifty feet of the property to our right and to our left and combine it with the acre that we own and subdivide it into six lots.
Any questions of Mr. Mosley while he's up here, counsel?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who do you represent?
Myself.
Okay. Who are, I'm sorry. What is your connection to the owners of the property at the Wildwood Development?
They would be the sellers of the property and I would be the buyer of the property.
Okay. Do you have a contract with them or something?
Yes.
Okay. So you're there as their agent?
Yes.
Okay. That's what would be necessary in order for us to.
Correct.
We have to deal with the people who owns the property where the covenant now is in place.
Okay.
So you're speaking on behalf of the owners of Wildwood Center Phase Two. Who is that?
Yeah, it's WF-A-001 LLC, but it's Wells Fargo, it's Oak Street Capital and it's Bank of America, I believe.
But you're here as their agent?
Yes.
Okay. Greg, do you have the, you have the owner's property, the property name?
No, sir. I'm not looking it up. It's on our file up there.
Okay.
We've got.
Just so you have it, that's all.
We have it, yes, sir.
Okay. Excuse me.
I was gonna say, the table, these photographs are, that one right there, the area in red is the area that Mr. Mosley's asking to purchase. That's the aerial shot of the parking deck is the, is the rightmost large building. And we've got two other photos up there that, there's your tax map that has it colored in red, the area that's, he's attempting to purchase. And there's one more.
Is that the existing?
That is the outline of the existing buffer. Yes, sir.
Maybe just as a matter of background, this property was subdivided and rezoned under a plan, under a PMUD that had a restricted covenant of a 100-foot natural buffer adjacent to the property, adjacent to the existing residential. And what they're requesting is that, is that buffer will be modified, if you go back one turn, Brian, the existing buffer that's shown in green will be modified to, to show take out of the buffer, the red crossed section, which is approximately 50 feet. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And you, Mr. Mosley, you, I mean, Mr. Mosley, you, you are representing the owners of the property, but you also are the person who seeks to buy the property?
Yes.
Okay. Under some contract you have with them?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr.? Mr. Gualtney?
So, Mr. Mosley, has any of the buffer been disturbed to date?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you.
I have a question. I just wanna clarify.
Ms. Andrus?
You say you wanna shift the buffer. Does that mean you wanna remove the buffer or you want to, I mean, when you shift something, you just pick it up in place and move it? So are you creating 50 feet of more buffer on the other side of that and there's nowhere to do that?
I wish I could point. So if you, if you go back.
Red line.
If you look to the right.
He's trying.
Right of the vertical red line that runs parallel to the parking deck.
Right.
It's 161 feet between that red line and the edge of the parking deck. The first 100 feet is a natural buffer. It was what was there 500,000 years ago. It's just never been replanted. It is what it is. The, the back 61 feet was reforested when this development was done. It's actually denser than the first 100 feet. So when I say shift the buffer, I'm gonna move the line. So yes, we're gonna cut down the first 50 feet, but the remaining 111 feet is just as dense as the 50, so.
Let's be clear, we got rid of 50 feet first.
Yeah. I think shift is the wrong word, is what we're trying to say.
Yeah.
Or move is the correct word.
I mean, the buffer would be decreased by 50 feet.
Yes.
Yes.
That's either yes or no.
Well, as I tried to explain, there's 161 feet of area.
I understand.
Yes.
Again, it's either yes or no.
There will be a 100-foot natural buffer that's as good or worse than it is right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, ma'am, this lady is first.
Yes, she signed in for me, if that's all right.
No, that's great.
My name is Charles Smith. I live at 1,000 Oak Grove Road there in Homewood. I've been there for 43 years.
Yes.
In that time, I have seen many mayors and city council come and go. I've seen promises made, as in this case, the buffer. It's sad to say, in that period of time, I have seen the previous commitments to the citizens, promises broken. The way I look at it is that y'all, mayor, city council, have an opportunity to stand tall with the citizens, the promise that was made originally for the buffer, or take the other route and prove, again unfortunately, that promises made to the citizens aren't worth the words or the spit or the breath to say them. That's y'all's, where y'all are at. And I hope that y'all will stick with the citizens.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And you are?
My name is Ellen Smith. I'm at 1,003 Oak Grove Road. We're both Smiths and live across the street from each other, but we're not related.
Well, you've got another Smith over here, so.
We just got family everywhere. My comment is similar to Mr. Smith's as far as we are in the PMUD district and we were promised the 100-foot buffer and I would like to see that remain. I know changes are coming forth in West Homewood and I think it's wonderful and I know that we have to grow and I'm not against anyone building anything, but I am wanting them to stay within the guidelines that are there. So that's my comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I can put you down in the no category also?
Yes, sir.
Next. You did register, right?
I did.
Wonderful. You are?
I am Jennifer Giles, 100 Venetian Way. So I live just down the road from these lovely folks, right at the end of Oak Grove and Venetian Way. Like my other neighbors here, I will say, I am absolutely against this. The buffer exists to protect all of West Homewood residents. I understand that it's owned by whatever XYZ ABC Corporation, but that was put in place to protect all of us from noise and added light pollution. Any of these continued trends to try and continue to gobble up land, subdivide it to add density without following the existing regulations, it's just not in the best interest of West Homewood, the city of Homewood at large. It's in the best interest of these individual developers and I would just like to point, and I'm sure they're lovely people, but they make money off of this and it doesn't help our neighborhoods. I would also like to point out that when you think about an individual homeowner who's seeking variances for their individual houses, one of the most stated things is you cannot do that because of a financial reason. So having developers come in and seek all these ways around to increase their profitability on these pieces of property is just a financial reason as well. And if an individual homeowner doesn't have that as relief, then we shouldn't be continuing conversations like this to give financial relief to these developers. So I would ask, in the interest of myself and my neighbors that I've all heard from, please do not allow this to continue to go through. Protect our buffer to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next.
Justin Limbaugh, 328 Willoughby Road. As an engineer for an occupation, I like to think that things aren't arbitrary. So I hiked out to the property two weeks ago and then if you take 50 foot each way and you meet it in a corner, that's 75, that's 70 feet from corner to corner. So I went 70 feet deep into where we're talking about cutting into and it goes from brush and a lot of vegetation to nothing but a few trees and a hill going straight to the parking deck. I heard earlier that it's just as dense that far in as what we're gonna be cutting and I didn't find that to be the case. Took a few pictures, put them on social media, identified that, if y'all need it. But I like to think that there's a reason that this buffer was put there and cutting into it just because we want to, I don't think is a good enough reason. I love development and I'm glad it's coming, but let's do it in a smart way, not just because we want a few more houses. Thank you for your time.
So I am putting you in the no column also?
Please.
Yes.
Liz Elaby, 612 Cobb Street. And I'm against it for all the reasons you've heard before, so I'm just here really to take a poll, if I could, and see if everybody who's gonna be voting on this has been out to look at the site. You have?
Yeah.
Have you been there to look at it? Haven't walked out there?
I know where it is, but I have not walked.
Haven't seen?
Yes.
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 Andy, you've been out to see it?
This morning.
This morning? Okay.
I won't be voting.
You won't be voting?
No.
Have you seen it? Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Oh, Alex.
I said yes.
Yes? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amber Custos. I'm on the Homewood Environmental Commission and I'm also a resident of Ward Two. I live at 217 Raleigh Avenue. I'm here just to represent my concerns about the environmental impact of losing this buffer would be, losing the trees. They're there right now. They help with the heat island effect in that area. This will also, losing those trees, it'll place strain on our stormwater systems. And then I believe that we need to keep the buffer to mitigate against noise and light pollution in the area. So I agree with what everyone else has been saying.
Thank you. And by the way, thank you all very much for your succinctness. I really appreciate that. I think that's a word.
My name's Jeremy Brown. Live at 704 Cobb Street.
Live at 704 Cobb Street. We moved to Homewood 11 years ago, bought a 2-1 with three kids. And amazingly, did that until 2016. Finally, added on because we said we wanted to stay at home. We wanted to live here, stay here, raise our family here. And so I'm an engineer as well, and so I've seen the site and looked at it. And the biggest thing for me with the buffer is, when you remove that, you can't get it back. You know, some things you can make a decision on, and you can go back and say, made a mistake, let's adjust that. And I think the biggest thing to add on to what already has been said with the other impacts is just that, once you make that decision, you can't go back on the buffer. So for me, it's a no. I don't feel like it's a good decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Next? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter?
Yeah, I think I would.
Well, please come forward. Did you have a chance to sign in?
No, I didn't sign in. You don't need to go sign in.
Please do. Well.
I'll just add my name to Charles's name.
That'll work. I'm anxious to hear what you have to say.
Oh, I don't have much to say at all, except to remind you that our town is called Homewood.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Anyone else? If there is not, we are going to close this public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, we do have a.
Report from committee, right? So we'd get a report from.
Well, I did not have that. Yes, we do have a report from committee. And again, was that, that was, was that PND or?
Special issues.
Special issues. Ms. Smith, please. Thank you.
Yes, it was. It's all my minutes. So we.
I didn't mean to put you on spot.
No, that's okay.
No, thank you very much. No, no, no.
We, there was a motion made to approve the removal of the buffer, and it was denied in committee with a, it was a unanimous vote to deny it. I can't remember how many members of the committee were there, so it was either four to zero or five to zero. I think everybody was there, so it was a five to zero vote to deny approving the removal of the buffer.
I understand. All right. So the report from special issues cannot be a motion.
No, because it was a negative.
So again, the chair would welcome a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion from Mr. White, second from Mr. Thames. And the motion would be to authorize the removal of the buffer? Yes.
It's a positive motion.
It's a positive motion, Ms. Kendrick.
Movements have to be made in the positive.
Okay. All in favor of this positive motion, signified by saying aye? All opposed, signified by saying nay?
Nay.
And that is unanimous.
And I'll have to abstain, Bruce. I'll have to abstain.
Okay. So that's, that's zero, 10 with one abstention. Does anyone else need to abstain? Okay. Please record it as such, Mr. Burgett. All right, and that item is handled. Now, we will go back to, and y'all are welcome to stay, but our feelings will not be hurt if you are not. All right, we're going to go back to 28, 10, 18. Request to share expenses for improvements in the infrastructure in the city right-of-way. Requested by James Decker. Report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Okay, let's see. Yes, sir. Mr. President, the finance committee met on December 10th, voted five to zero to recommend and recommend funding of $6,523 from carryover fund balance. And have Mr. Kendrick review that. So five to zero out of finance.
All right, so we have a motion from finance. Do we have any further discussion on this particular item? Hopefully, everyone remembers it. Chair would wel, well, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-184. Does that sound right, Mr. Kendrick? Yes, sir. All right. 10, 11, 18. Bid opening set for December 6th at 4:00 p.m. for the police tactical van. Mr. Jones?
Okay, I have the information on this. I do have a quick question for Mr. Burgett. So this was not sent to finance, correct?
Well, it was, we said, we, it came out of committee for it to set a bid opening for the item. And we had the bid opening last Thursday.
Okay.
On the 6th?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'll just be clear that finance, really, all they did was authorize the bid opening. And so I do have a report from police, but so I'll just have to make this motion from me.
As an individual, yes.
As an individual motion. The, the motion is to accept the sole bid of Mercedes-Benz of Birmingham. The amount is $57,949.50. And then that would be coming out of the Capitol Police Line item 12-14-589-900. So I would make, that is budgeted, and I would make that motion off, on the floor here.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCluskey. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And that will be, is there any nays? No nays? Then that's 18-185, and that is approved. All right, let's move on to 40, 11, 18. Request to consider Huntington Road as a one-way. Requested by Peter Wright and Kelly Chapin and Jennifer Andrus. And this has been carried over. First reading from, I mean, is there a committee report here? I think we've already had that. I think we already had that, yes.
I think Mr. Cobb was, Mr. Cobb was going to speak with Volker. It was where we left things.
Is there any enlightenment you can share with us?
I've contacted Volker to look into this, to do a little study over there to see what the effects would be. And we're going to have to do some funding on that, so it will be coming shortly.
Well, we can carry that over if.
It needs to carry over for quite some time. Possibly on the table to give them time after the first year to do their study and make their report back to us, so.
I'd like to hear their report, their study.
Mr. President, should we send it back to committee to discuss what Volker sends back?
Absolutely. I think that's a good idea. Now, again, forgive me, which committee are we sending that back to?
Yeah, it wasn't PND.
Funding for the traffic study, the study of.
Well, it needs to be Public Safety.
I mean, Public Safety, that's right. I'm sorry, not PND, Public Safety.
We'll send this back to Mr. McCluskey's. Okay, done. Good. Thank you. Bear with me. 39, 11, 18. Request for consideration for the mayor to sign a loan with Bryant Bank for the library expansion. Requested by Mr. Burgett, our, our finance director. Do we, do we need to talk about anything else on this tonight? Or, Mr. Jones, is your committee aware of this, or?
Mr. President, I'm trying to remember why we carried it over.
The, the documents weren't prepared by Bryant Bank.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Okay, are they now prepared?
Yes, we have them, President.
Okay. I know we voted unanimously on this from finance to, to approve, to approve this. We're just waiting, yeah, we're waiting on the documents, so.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we created a resolution last meeting.
No, we did not.
So we have a motion from finance. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is going to be Resolution 18-186. Thank you, and that is approved, Mayor. 27, 11, 18. Request for consideration for budget amendments for fiscal year that ends 9:30 of 18. Requested by Mr. Burgett, our finance director. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the budget amendments.
Good. Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is 18-187. 03, 12, 18. Request to set a bid opening for the watchtower. Requested by Sergeant Suddles of our police department. Do we know, Mr. Burgett, how long they need for this?
Yeah, I have that report.
Oh, go. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend the bid opening date of January 14th at 4:30. So if, Mr. Burgett, if you can, if you can keep this on the agenda in finance, and we'll report on it in finance. The, the deadline for bids to be turned in is 4 o'clock on the 14th of January. And then we'll open them at 4:30.
Sounds good.
So that's five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Okay. 07, 12, 18. Request, we'll keep this on the agenda. 07, 12, 18. Request for consideration of Highway 280 Cooperative Improvement District requested by Ms. Andrus. Report from PND, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir. The committee met, and we discussed the reason for the formation of the cooperative and what its duties would be. Voted four to zero to recommend forming the co-op district.
All right, good. So we have a motion from Planning and Development. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 18-188, and it is approved unanimously. All right. 02, 12, 18. Request for consideration for a sign for the tunnel at the Pigley-Wigley under Highway 31. Requested by Jennifer Andrus. Report from Public Safety, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, thank you. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the signage, but sends to the finance committee for funding.
Great. So we need to send this back to finance?
Correct.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
And we will do that before we vote on that, okay? 05, 12, 18. Request for consideration of amending ordinance number 2586. Requested by Mr. Burgett. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week, and just for a sense of explaining what the ordinance actually is, the state of Alabama has taken over regulation of group car, what do you call that? Transportation, like Uber, Lyft, yeah. Rideshare, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. So we're actually not amending this ordinance. We're actually repealing this ordinance because the city of Homewood will no longer have any involvement in the regulation of the rideshare organization. So we're repealing this ordinance. And it was voted five to zero out of committee to approve the repealing of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We, we still have an ordinance to read, repealing the ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to repeal ordinance 2586 entitled Transit and Passenger Transportation, being ordained by the city as follows. City Council does not adopt this ordinance. Repeal ordinance 2586 adopted by the City Council on or about December 7th, 2015. Section 2, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council, approving by the mayor, as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion in a second for unanimous consent.
Same move, second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So this will be ordinance 2727. No, sir, this is a resolution. Is this a resolution? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm one ahead of you. You're exactly right. 2727. Okay, thank you. 2727 is an ordinance. Chair would welcome a motion in a second for.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So ordinance 2727 is approved unanimously. Next item is 06, 12, 18. Request for consideration for a tent variance at 1400 Oxmore Road, Trinity United Methodist Church. Requested by Tori Tenniswood and Greg Cobb. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to recommend approving the tent being put up for Discovery Weekend. Motion made by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from special issues. Any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I received some feedback this week. I had actually forgotten about some, some of the workings that go on with this event that occurred last year. One of my neighbors reminded me on Saturday afternoon, we were talking, that they had closed the road early last year, so that caused some turmoil with traffic on Seminole, neighbors not knowing it's closed. So one of the things I wanted to request was, if we can put, make this, or I'll make the motion contingent upon them getting an event permit with the PD so that the police are properly notified because they were not aware last year, and that the road not get closed prior to 6:00 p.m.
If this, this resolution doesn't do anything to approve the tent?
This is a tent resolution.
Okay, right, can we not make the tent? Because they closed the road as part of that.
No, I understand. And that's not going to have anything to do with the tent on the property, on the parking lot. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
I understand what you want to accomplish, but I think we can accomplish this with communication.
I was about to say, I can, I will reach out to them tomorrow. I'll reach out to Robert Stewart tomorrow and tell them that they need to file for a permit to close the road, and that they should wait until 6:00 p.m.
It seemed like it should be tied together since the tent is across the street, and it would be part of the reason they closed the road.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I would challenge the personnel, and particularly Robert, that's in charge of this, to quote, "do what's right," and let's see if we can make that. But they can't close the road without our permission.
I mean, they did last year, and it caused a ton of heartaches.
Well, they can't do that.
Moms carrying two kids down the street, doing a little.
I understand. No, they, they can't do that. And we, we need to make that very clear.
Well, I thought of being contingent, I thought it'd be nice, because the police last year, they, it was some concern that there wasn't a permit, so I was just trying to make sure it got done.
I understand.
I just don't, I don't know why it would be damaging to go ahead and do that. I just don't, I, I don't know why it would be damaging to go ahead and do that.
Well, procedurally, again, the only way you could do that would be to send it back to special issues so we'd have a different motion.
Yeah, this is not to March the 7th, so you got plenty of time.
Yeah, we could send it back.
Okay. Let's send this back to special issues. No problem, okay? And we'll, we'll address that in committee, okay? Thank you. Committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
So move. Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. All right, we move on to other new business. We have just a few items. 11, 12, 18. Request to set a public hearing in referral to Planning and Development for consideration to rezon property at 1409 Wild Forest Drive from an R6, which is attached dwelling district to a C1, which is office building district. Applicant is Wes Klein, owner of LMOB, all capitals, Properties LLC, for the purpose of bringing the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance, which does not allow parking as a primary use on the residentially zoned piece of property. Requested by Mr. Pew. Public hearing will be set for January 14th at 6:00 PM. 12, 12, 18. Request for a public hearing in referral to Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1 West Lake Shore Drive, requested by David Brant and Greg Cobb with BEZ. We will also set that public hearing for January 14th at 6:00 PM. 14, 12, 18. Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 151 Wildwood Parkway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1750 and 1910 excessive growth put forth by Scott Cook, our code enforcement with police department. We will also set that public hearing for January 14th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. What?
2019.
2019. You're right, you're right, try it. I keep saying 18. It is 2019 in the case of 11, 12, 18, 12, 12, 18, 14, 12, 18. And the next item is 15, 12, 18. Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1616 Berry Avenue a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1098 litter and ordinance 1310 open and unenclosed storage, and ordinance is 1750 and 1910 excessive growth. And we will set this public hearing for January 14th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. All right, two more items. 16, 12, 18. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of December 3rd, 2018 through December 16th, 2018. Mr. Jones?
This is Mrs. Smith, last time to approve vouchers.
That's so exciting.
I know.
Merry Christmas to me.
That's right. That's right.
I looked at the vouchers, and Robert answered all my questions that I had, so I would move that we pay the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Hold it, for the record, this is not her last time.
It's just her last...
We're not letting her off for 2020, Walter, okay? I just want to be sure. Although, I must add to the record, 2018 has been a glorious year for, for me reviewing records, so...
Only four quarters and five minutes. I can do the math. All right, motion by Ms. Smith, second, I heard over here, from Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 18, 189. Finally, 17, 12, 18. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Davis Architects for the library expansion, requested by Deborah Fout and Mr. Gualtney. So, chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, this is Resolution 18, 190, and this is the end of our agenda. Mayor, your...
No, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It's probably my error. Did we vote on item 28, 10, 18?
I think it was on that twice.
No, we...
It was.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And did Ms. Fout say anything to...
Ms. Fout, did you want to say anything to this, or...
Right.
We can record that. All right, Mr. Kendrick.
Mr. Limbaugh, I've just, 19, 12, 18 was a variance to the fence ordinance at 1511 Ridge Road.
Yes.
You want to have a public hearing, or just want to send it to committee?
We're going to...
Unless you're out there and...
No, no, we're going to send it to committee.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
It's a committee referral item. No problem. All right, now, Mayor.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Well said. Mr. Gualtney? Thank you, Mr. Thames. All right, do you have any committees to set, or...
Mr. Jones, how much time we need for finance?
Really have, maybe two or three items, so we could, we could be pretty fast, 15 minutes.
What, what day, Mr. Limbaugh, do we say?
Well, what, what your president would like to see is, these committees set perhaps immediately before the January 14th meeting.
Okay, so, five o'clock. I'll do about 15, 15 minutes on January 14th.
All right.
Did we vote to move January meetings?
We didn't move January meeting. We're just setting committee meetings. There is a difference there, Mr. Wolverton.
Might just be a little preemptive, but, sorry.
It could be. Some of us are very optimistic. All right, Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly wish everyone a very Merry Christmas as well, and would thank my colleagues for their vote on the Wildwood North matter. I am appreciative that you saw that matter in the same way I did. And my last item, in the furor about the national championship game and when our committee meetings will be, I will put aside for the moment and simply say, "Go Blazers." And that's my final comment on the matter. Thank you.
They're Tuesday night, right?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Six o'clock.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Kendrick, I'm so sorry you're sitting where you are and you couldn't see the look on Mr. Higginbotham's face. First time I've ever seen fire in this man's eyes, and I don't think it's because he's a dragon either, but with that, Mr. Wolverton?
Merry Christmas to everybody. Hope everybody has a great one. I'm just looking forward to time with family and some good football games. And go Huskies, play in Ohio State.
There you go.
It'll be a good Rose Bowl.
Rose Bowl is the Rose Bowl. All right, Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, Merry Christmas to everybody. I don't know whether, and I just, I guess I have a quick question for Mrs. Andrus and Mr. Wright. As far as the Huntington item coming back to public safety with Mr. Cobb's recommendation tonight, is that going to take some time? Do we need to, I mean, is it immediate?
Oh, yeah, we're not going to...
Is it immediate that we do anything?
No, this is going to be, I mean, they're going to...
It's going to be a while. Yeah. I think we're going to have some questions. And then, to Mr. Wolverton about the...
I mean, it just depends on...
Because, I mean, I can, I can call the meeting or not call the meeting, just because these are the only two items that are on it.
I got you. It just depends on when we hear that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm inclined to think that nothing's going to be...
Done by then?
Done by then.
Yeah, so, okay, well, we won't, we won't call public safety.
Good, thank you. Mr. Jones, we've already called finance. What else?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Burgett for a wonderful parade, a great job putting the float together. That was great, and I enjoyed seeing your grandchildren, triplets, they're, they're all over the place. It's unbelievable. They're, they're great. I mean, they're great. And just had a good time, and thank you for the overall parade. I thought it was wonderful, and everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Merry Christmas, and we will have special issues at 5:30, and I think I can do mine in 15 minutes, too, so... 5:30 to 5:45.
Great. Thank you.
Just happy holidays to everyone. I hope everyone has a safe and happy Christmas, New Years, everything else.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I would like to thank Mr. Burgett specifically for the blankets on the hay. That was a nice touch this year, so thank you for that.
Well, that was Lavanda Promised. She said y'all can't be sitting on raw hay.
Thank you, that was great. I will also say that the Cooperative Improvement District, we have our first meeting on Friday at 1:30, so we will have all representatives from everybody on the co-op there. Mr. Kendrick is joining us also, and Mr. Colvin from Mountain Brook, so we're on our way.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you. I don't think we're going to have to do public works. I only have one item, which is drainage on Bonita and Roxbury. It's still in public works, and I know we got some information to go through. So, no public works. Happy holidays to everyone. Robert, thank you for the parade, and on behalf of my wife, thank you for the more comfortable seating arrangements, and always a great time. And I was just going to make one, one note to the council, and you guys may have already known this, but just that it's not news to anyone really, because it's been really put through the hard work going on for a long, long time, but the high schools are still doing so well with their rankings and, and identification of success, and I just wanted to make note of it and, and how important and critical it is to our community and our, our town, and, and keep up the good work, school systems, and, and keep up the good work, council, in supporting it and understanding how important those schools are to our community.
Absolutely.
And with that, I look forward to everybody getting together tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, and we will see each and every one of y'all next year. With that, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.